Tara, please. So, please, rise and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for my mission under God and individual and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is content agenda. One motion, please, for the approval of the minutes from October ninth, 2025, and approval of the manifest. Is there a motion?
Oh, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jay Aikerman.
Here.
Eve Flynn. T. Giles.
Yes.
A Hicks. Arlo Ikono.
Yeah.
H. Randall.
Here.
K. Van Berg and D. O.
We do have a quorum, and now to the first item. Content agenda for one motion for the approval of the minutes from October ninth, 2025, and approval of the manifest. Is there a motion? By Herb, second?
I'll say it.
By Tara. Any questions, comments, deletions, exceptions? No? Do we have none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And next item is the public comment period. Is there anybody that would like to speak during the public comment period, please?
Yes, sir, I'd like to speak.
Just step up to the table, please, so the microphone can pick up what you're saying. Everybody knows that this is a live stream to YouTube. Please state your name, and it's a three-minute comment period.
I believe me in practice. My name is Representative Joseph Barton. I'm here tonight because the district and the Whitefield Police Department jointly issued a no trespass order against me on October 24th without notice, without cause, without lawful authority. What happened to me is not just improper, it is constitutionally impermissible. First, retaliation for protected speech is unlawful. The U.S. Supreme Court has repeatedly held that government officials, like the superintendent of your school district, may not punish a person for petitioning the government or speaking on matters of public concern. In Pickering versus the Board of Education, the court made it very clear that public bodies may not retaliate against individuals for protected speech. In these versus Bartlett and Hartman versus Moore, the court also reaffirmed that retaliatory government actions violate the First Amendment when protected activity is a substantial motivating factor. The First Circuit is also explicit. In Barton versus Clancy, the court held that government officials violate 42 USC 1983 when they retaliate against an individual for engaging in First Amendment protected activity, and that such retaliation is actionable even when it's masked as administrative measures. The timing here is not subtle. I submitted a request for review to the Attorney General's Office and filed an LSR concerning conduct inside this district, and within days, the district and the police issued a no trespass order with no reason given, no due process, nothing at all. And it meets the definition of unconstitutional retaliation, especially under the Board of Education versus Doyle, cases in 1977. Second, the order violates due process under the Fourteenth Amendment. There are several cases that I could cite where if the government deprives someone of a protected interest, it must provide notice and an opportunity to be heard. I didn't have that. Courts specifically addressing school-based trespass orders have held that they implicate parent liberty interests and require due process. Again, I received no notice, there were no allegations, no hearing, no explanation whatsoever. It's a textbook due process violation. Third, the order unconstitutionally interferes with my fundamental parental rights. The Supreme Court has long recognized that parents have a fundamental right to direct the upbringing and education of their children. This order blocks me from attending IEP meetings, coordinating special education services, picking up my child safely, and participating in school functions and events. The IDEA and FERPA codify many of these rights, do not permit exclusion without cause. Interference with these rights will have consequences. Fourth, the district cannot cite any statute, regulation, or policy authorizing unilateral no trespass orders under these circumstances.
Excuse me, Mr. Barton? Can I give you another minute?
Yes.
Is that all right, Mr. Chair? As long as you're... Everybody agrees? Sorry about that.
Okay. And the New Hampshire Supreme, the New Hampshire Supreme Court made it clear that restrictions on access to public property, including schools, must be reasonable, content-neutral, and grounded in lawful authority. This order was none of those things. And finally, I must raise an additional concern, a possible violation of New Hampshire's constitutional prohibition on unauthorized emollients. That's when you pay someone to violate the law. Part two of Article 15 bars public officials from doing that. There are several opinions of court justices. I sent all of you a letter that the people behind me aren't aware of, you should all be aware of. I gave a deadline of November 7th. I haven't heard from the superintendent, I haven't heard from any member of the school board individually. So, I would ask that you take action, rescind this no trespass order, and just let me pick up my daughter from the school, and I would yield to any questions.
Well, thank you for speaking. There is, this is not a common, I mean, question and answer period. And you, just to clarify, though, you won't get a response from any of the board members because none of them, or none of us, can act individually. We would have to act as a board.
I would ask you to act as a board, then.
Okay. So, next question is whether or not a trespass order made by the superintendent...
Yes.
...is able to be appealed to the school board. And I'm waiting to hear from our legal counsel on whether that's possible or not.
Okay. I wouldn't wait more than today. I have a complaint ready to file on Monday with the court in Concord. I don't want to have to do that, it's going to cost your taxpayers money to defend against it. I filed civil rights violations cases in the past, and I've gotten some substantial sums. This is an easy win for me.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment period? Seeing none, the public comment period will remain open until 6:35. If you do have a comment in that amount of time, please raise your hand, we'll stop what we're doing, and I will recognize you. But I would like to recognize the scouts that are here with us tonight who had to, is it to fulfill a badge? Come to a public reading, and they chose ours. Welcome. Okay, moving along. Superintendent's report, and Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Scott.
So, obviously, Dr. Anastasia is out tonight, so I'm covering in her place. We're going to skip down to C., which is the principal's report. They've got things they need to do. Who wants to go first? Looks like ladies first. Mrs. Ainsworth for White Mountains Regional High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to highlight some of the things that you got in the principal's report. I won't read it in its entirety, that seems a little redundant. So, just to point out some things in the different segments, under structure and finance, we've just been working thoughtfully and strategically to use our resources wisely for teaching and learning at the high school. We are very fortunate to have access to the grant from the Bar Foundation, which has supported some of that professional learning and program development for our students and our professional staff. For our district culture, a lot happened in the early phases of our school year. Want to highlight a few. Our Paradise FFA chapter went to the fall competition at UNH. Our A team took first, and our B team placed fourth at that competition. Our chapter's also been active, being present at Lancaster Fair for Farmer for a Day, and also, they went and participated in trunk or treat as some of their community outreach. Homecoming came. The drought caused us to not be able to have the bonfire, and the rain caused us not to be able to have the parade. But, we did have great homecoming, beautiful weather for homecoming events on Saturday, and athletic competitions, but also, we flipped our parade and did a reverse parade and had our students set up their floats in different segments of the gym. We had ice cream sundaes for people who came to see the students' floats, they gave out candy, and the different folks that came were able to vote on their favorite float. It's a little bit of a different vibe, and people stayed dry. So, that's how we managed that one. Coming up, we've got a lot of things happening in this little window between seasons. Youth and Government heads to Concord tomorrow for the prelegislative session. We've got 18 students going, which, when we brought it back, we had three, so we've seen some growth there. We also have the induction for NHS coming up next week. Got your invites tonight. And coming up, starting next weekend, not this weekend, White Mountain Players, in a collaboration with Colonel Town Players, will be having SpongeBob the Musical here for two consecutive weekends, so please come to the show. This year, we switched up our advisory program a little bit, we went back to same-grade advisories, and we have very specific things we do on designated days of the week. On Tuesdays, it's our Git Day, which is Get It Done, in which students report to their home advisory, they are prompted to check their emails, to get their calendar set, put down what they have coming up for due dates, and also, go into enriching students and register for their Wednesday choice. Wednesday is our WIN advisory, What I Need, and in that advisory, students can stay in their home-based advisory, or they can register and go for club meetings and things like that. Teachers can also schedule students to come to them for intervention and extra help. So, both students and teachers can schedule in order to get kids where they need to be. And then, Thursdays are about compass and looking forward. And so, on Thursday, students go to their home base, and we have activities that are specific to 11:12, more future-forward college career planning and exiting high school, 9:10 entering high school, becoming a Spartan, kind of some of that executive functioning skills and things like that as they come in as ninth and continue as 10th graders. In teaching and learning, we've been super busy. Couple weeks ago, we did an off-campus evacuation, and so, we planned that drill and coordinated to have our students leave campus and go to our off-campus site, timing ourselves, determining what our pace would be. We had law enforcement support us along Route Three. Our partner, where we go for our off-campus site, also collaborated with us. Homeland Security Center representative, and so, we were able to get feedback with them in a debrief right after we completed that evacuation, and so, we got really good feedback on our processes. Also noted that in that process, our EOP doesn't yet include grade seven and eight because they aren't here yet, but also, that's a big piece that we've got to incorporate moving forward. Also, last week, we had a team of seven educators from New England here for the NIASC Decennial Accreditation Visit, so that happens every 10 years, and so, they came to review our documents, talk with our staff, students, and...
School board.
Yes, the school board, administration, and we got really good verbal feedback. That report takes probably up to six weeks to be finished in its writing and then back to us. We go back and forth, fine-tuning it until it can go public. So, we're not expecting anything for several weeks, but some things that were highlighted, they noted the care and quality with which our facilities inside and out have been maintained, the Spartan pride, image of a graduate evident throughout our building, in our classes, student engagement, strong student engagement, and as well as collaboration. They particularly liked having a chance to hop into Culinary Arts to see diversified ag and culinary working on that hog that was butchered and then being processed in culinary with the two groups of students working on that. So, that was kind of cool. We've also had teachers working with NHLI to develop course competencies. That's something that we're doing to work on getting our courses all in alignment with the 306s. Yesterday, Mr. Ferguson and I had an opportunity to work with a consultant who is from Spring Point, working with us as administrator, to improve our skills by giving feedback after observations, and so, we worked with him. One of his takeaways also, our students are engaged, the school's in great shape, your kids are great, they're polite, your teachers are also engaging kind and things like that. So, I had really nice things to say again, so that was like another feel-good. Then upcoming, we have students going to see the Crucible, and today is College Application Day, and we had 47 seniors apply for college. Nice. So, been really busy three or four weeks. Anything?
Any question? I heard exhibition night.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's coming up. Exhibition night is November 19th, 5:00 to 6:30.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Good question.
The night before our next school board meeting.
All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm going to take off my school board hat for a second and put on the Community Builders Hub hat.
Yeah.
And so, I just want to compliment you and the students and Officer Alaska because this Spartans on a Mission group that might be driving everybody crazy, but they are amazing. We've got like, what, 30, 40 students?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, please count it. That are involved in just community outreach and really doing that neighbor-to-neighbor, hey, you need something fixed at your house, or you need tech support or something, our students are jumping in and doing that. And then, you know, they met, they filled a food pantry, they went and met with the Dalton neighbors, and Bill Jones, who's somewhere in this building right now, they went, the North Country Health Consortium recently had, I'm bad with titles, but it was a Positive Youth Development Team, blah, 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 blah. It was, it was a very long title. And we had seven students go, and they represented this school and themselves so well. I mean, they just were so well-spoken, and I just was so, I all-terried. But, anyway, so I appreciate the partnership with Mike and the kids. So, thank you for dealing with us and our craziness.
Thanks. It's a really good opportunity for the students to get a different perspective. I'm the instructor.
Yeah, they're just awesome. And even, while I'm talking about it, also with the Community Builders, I've had really quickly, briefly, but this is so good, this is about our students. Our sixth graders in Lancaster, thanks to Scott, we're continuing that relationship with Ice Pond Village, and so, the students are playing bingo with the residents there, we're going there, they're coming here, they're cooking for them, they're hanging out, and one of the residents at Ice Pond Village last week during our bingo thing, she went up to one of our, one of our teachers, Missy, gave her bear, and she grabbed her arm, and she said, "This matters." And it just, just to know that our school is part of that, and our students are just these, residents can be really lonely, and I can't tell you how kind those sixth graders are too, even the ones that are like, a little...
Six-seven.
Like I used to be, a little, yeah. A little, they just were so, they're just good kids, and everybody loves them. So, thank you, Scott, for also allowing that craziness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Plumley? Mrs. Plumley with the Whitefield Elementary School.
Good evening.
Hello.
We're also sharing the New Hampshire Application Day at the elementary schools as well. Around structure and finance, just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, and actually, I didn't put it in the board packet, but the renovation of our new nurses' office at Whitefield School has made a huge difference. Want to thank our, thank Rob Scott and our maintenance crew, and Gary Brown, and all of his folks for the work that they did over the summer to create a more current nursing or health office for our students. As a result of that, we also relocated some of our admin offices. The Assistant Principal, Principal's Office, and SRO, we've been able to make that work a little bit better in the office suite as well. District culture, we've done a lot of work. Kelly Fuller has done a lot of work around our district culture and our Tier One to open up our year, the development of our Pirate Expectations that students are engaging in on a daily basis. Pirate stands for participate, in control, reliable, achieve, turn the page, and empathetic. And so, students get positive shout-outs every Friday for following our Pirate Expectations, and then, on a monthly basis, we're highlighting a student per grade level to get the monthly Pirate Award. In addition, we're recognizing our staff who are going above and beyond and having a real positive impact on our building, and so, we have a Golden Anchor Award that's also awarded on a monthly basis. We've done a number of community events, our Open House Title One, what was that, we had a third thing, Back to School Barbecue. Again, a successful evening with over 200 people that we fed that evening, and it's just really nice to see the community interacting with one another and just enjoying time to sit and chat. Last evening, we had our off-campus sign-ups for Winter Wednesday, and we have like 100 and over 120 kids who signed up for off-campus activities, so that's skiing, snowboarding, and the number of students who will go off to the Evergreen to do swimming, gymnastics, and rock climbing, so that was a real successful signup. Teaching and learning, we continue to work with our curriculum groups. Also, as Patsy had indicated, work with NHLI on developing those performance-based assessments to show mastery toward our competencies. We have another consultant who's coming in this year, Aaron Moore, who's helping across the district with, for Whitefield in particular, a rebuild of our Tier One and fostering positive classroom environments. And we have folks from our building who are also attending New Hampshire Place. I believe they go three to four times over the course of the year, doing some in-depth work around competency-based performance. We have teachers who are representing math, social studies, and science who are attending those sessions and coming back and sharing with their colleagues what they've taken away from those sessions, so. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I just...
It's okay.
That was awesome.
It's okay. It was always next year.
Shout-out to the CTE work that's happening too with the eighth grade. My eighth grader, who said they wanted to continue skiing every year as long as they possibly could, this year said, "I'm not doing off-campus because the alternative is CTE, and I want to be at high school," so.
Yeah, and we did that across the two schools, you know, Scott and I spoke, and that is, it's such a positive for our eighth graders that some of them don't do those sign-ups because they want to go to CTE. So, we left it this year as you can either do an off-campus, or you want to stay and go to your CTE, that's what you do, because they just, they love it, and it's a great opportunity for them.
Thank you.
I just, a quick question. So, the White Mountains, the other day, last week, had a Science Day for eighth graders. So, let's see, Woodsville went, Roveton went, Coldbrook went, I think Gorham went, this is to the college in Berlin. So, really, my question is, why isn't White Mountains Regional District going?
I wasn't aware of a Science Day.
No?
No.
So, they had over 180 kids show up, all eighth graders, and that is concerning to me because this is our, this is our district, and this is, you know, I don't know.
So, one of the things we can do, James, is for the next board meeting, you know, we can try to figure out what the barrier was, you know, whether it was communication, or, you know, who the original notice came to and why it didn't go on, but we can report out at the next meeting to what that barrier was.
Right, because there is several too, it's not just once per year for eighth graders. They have high schoolers go there as well, so they learn like biological sciences, for example, just whatever. They can rotate through the diesel mechanics in Littleton Campus. So, it's all, I mean, even, before I was on the board, I went and volunteered for the fifth graders, and we did a Forensics Day, and so, we did, so Dr. Aikerman did fingerprint analysis and DNA extractions and things like that, which were pretty cool for the fifth graders, they had no idea what was going on. But, it seems like this regional, this, our district has never sent our kids there, so I wanted, I wanted to...
I can speak to the fifth grade one last year, they had to cut participation off because once we learned about it, their event, they felt like was at capacity for fifth graders.
Okay.
And they said they would look at expanding the offering so more fifth graders could participate this year. But, you know, I can definitely look into the Science Event.
Yeah, can you find out who the contact person is at the college? So, we can kind of streamline that, because I would love to have our kids go, I mean, it's...
It's cool. Do they still do the Girls in Sted day in the winter too? Because that was an event they did...
That was the New Hampshire Department of Ed used to do that.
Oh, okay.
And for whatever reason, I don't know, they don't sponsor a Girls in Tech event anymore.
Well, could you find out for me at least?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
We'll report out at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can go after Scott, I just wanted to make sure I don't...
Well, we're going to run up, Scott likes to talk, so we'll... Recognize, state your name, put in town, please.
Do you mind if I say? So, I'm Gene Beeland, I'm from Lancaster.
Thank you.
You guys are starting to know me, I think. So, I'm here to talk about the dinner we had, was about a month ago now, right? And it seemed pretty positive, but there's a lot of questions that came up during that meeting, and I just don't know if we're going to answer them, even get answers, I don't know, on the SAU, excuse me, on the SAU website, or anything like that. So, that was one thing, and then, the other thing I was talking about is, you guys had a nice summary of it, but could we potentially see on the, on the SAU site or somewhere, just the raw data, like the Excel spreadsheets that Mr. Holmes and other people just jotted down everyone's questions? All right, because I guess there's a few questions that I'm just going to kind of bring up, and hopefully, we can get answers sometime down the road. One, the first thing is, this, you know, it's a pretty big project, and when you take on a project of this size, you typically want to have milestones and dates, right? So, you actually know that you're actually on schedule for achieving your ultimate goal. So, I was just wondering...
Just for people that don't know what you're talking about, he's talking about the seven, eight, three transition.
The seven, I'm sorry, yeah, the seven, eight transition.
We had a community dinner.
Yeah.
Everybody came together. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, yes. Seventh and eighth transition.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, yes. Seventh and eighth transition dinner, thank you. So, I was just wondering if we have something of that kind of mindset of like, okay, we need to have these things achieved by this date so we can then move on to, like, I think we have bathrooms and stuff and that we have to move on, just things like that. And then benchmarks, like what, what benchmarks do we have to actually say, this seventh and eighth grade transition is, is a success, right? Like, I, during the meeting, I asked and I forget who, but somebody's like, "Well, there's this statute determines from the state mandate, you have to have all this." And I thought to myself, well, that sounds like we're just trying to hit the bare minimum of making this considered to be successful. So, because all I've, all we, all we ever hear is, "All the, all the opportunities these kids are gonna get," right? I hear this vague opportunities. And one of, one of the questions I had at the dinner was, "What are these opportunities? Is it just the savior of CTE or are there actually additional opportunities these kids are going to get?" So, that's just another thing that I was hoping that maybe the SAU website that, that we could throw up there. Let's see. Okay, and then I guess the last thing was, so we had the, there's a few parents, right, that want to help, I'm one of them, right? We want to be included. Was the dinner it? Like, that was our, you got a few of our input and that's it? Or are there other tasks, roles, responsibilities that maybe we can take on and help with, with making sure the transition is actually a success? So, that's, that's just my two cents for today. It's less than three minutes, I hope.
Are there questions on that paper?
These are just little notes.
Okay. Trying to summarize.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully I summarize.
It's pretty handwritten and I'm not articulate on this, but yeah, it's pretty much all.
We will do our best to get some answers to those questions and do a better job of updating the public about what we're doing.
It's also not a bad thing that we're getting to know you, for the record. Like, it's nice to have people showing up.
And also, I mean, I don't know if I'm, again, let me put the other hat, the community builder's hat, we are talking about, Mike and I, about how to kind of get the kids together to integrate more with the high schoolers or junior high and, you know. Cheryl and Scott don't know it yet, but we've, we've been thinking about that because our high school students are, you know, having feelings.
Well, one, one last thing, actually. So, I've started helping out one meeting so far with Mr. Ryan Carr, the STEM guy. And he was talking about the seventh and eighth graders, trying to get them up there. And there, there's a busing issue, right? Like, it's a transportation issue. So, I don't know if that's something that maybe we could potentially address, getting seventh and eighth graders up after school to be part of like the STEM program here up at the high school. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so on the teaching and learning front, there isn't a whole lot new to report. We're continuing the work that we're doing with our literacy model, with our math model. Once the data becomes not embargoed anymore, I have more information to talk about why we're continuing all that. At this time, the state still has 2024, 2025 data embargoed, so we can't really go into that, but we're confident in the work that we're doing at Lancaster that we want to continue what we're doing. Wish, I wish, it's, it is November now and I wish that we could go into more, but we can't. One of the pieces, one of the pieces that we have highlighted that we need to focus a little bit more is on our writing from the data that we've seen internally and just that structure that we're, we're using and supporting our teachers with, and then that translates to how they're teaching and supporting students. So, that has been a focus. Ms. LaBoni is leading that with our teachers right now on how to incorporate different strategies and different approaches for writing. That is, that is the one area weakness that we're, we are trying to address. Just to mention real quick, our consulting work with CSS Consulting for Literacy and then BMI, which is the Vermont Math Initiative, that work continues to go on, we're really proud of that. Our teachers are really digging into that and not only when they're with the consultants, but they're actually giving up time during the school day to meet as data team meetings to continue that work without that, without that consultant support. And that's huge, really. That's where we're seeing that, okay, our staff's digging into this work, they believe in it, they're having conversations, they're having data conversations, they're having instructional conversations, and it's, it's meaningful work. What we're seeing is that Janine or I don't have to lead that, those conversations as much, so it's been three years on some of this, but we're really proud of our staff and how they're doing that. For safety, our emergency operations plan went into the state in October. Mrs. LaBoni is a huge player in that, making sure that all of our community resources all work together to make sure that that is up to date and going to, to be, if, if we ever have to implement any of it, that everybody knows what their role is. And then Fire Prevention and Safety Week, that just, that just wrapped up a few weeks ago. The Lancaster Fire Department, once again, brought over the fire trucks, students were able to get into the fire trucks, learn about all the different parts of fire safety. And they got some new hats this year, that was really the big thing, the fire hose, they all got to play with the fire hose and the hats, but there was a new set of hats this year, so they're really excited about that. We're really, really happy with that collaboration that continues. And then our fire marshals will be in soon and they're gonna be doing a demonstration and conversation on lithium ion batteries. So, they've done, they've done about wood stoves and different parts of, of being inside, but now they're gonna, they're gonna focus that presentation in a couple of weeks on lithium ion batteries, which is, as we all know, the major problem. And then Tara mentioned briefly, the work that our sixth graders are doing with some partners outside of the school. But if you haven't had a chance to listen to the podcast that we created this year, we have students and staff that are willing to talk about what they're doing that make Lancaster School so special. It started off as, "How many, how many weeks can we actually make this run?" And now, we've got it built out through Christmas time with people that want to be on. We have students now coming to us and saying, "Hey, I'd really like to talk about this." And staff going, "Why aren't we talking about this? Why aren't we putting this up to the community?" So, if you haven't had a chance to listen to it, it's, it's fun, it's a, it's a good way just to hear people talk about what's going on in the school, what's going on in the community. And, and we try to get our partnerships in there as much as possible, but it was a conversation heard that we had last year at one of the Ed programming committees.
Oh, yeah.
About how do we promote what we're doing?
Right.
And so, that's actually where that got started, is, is thinking about, how do we, not only as a school district, how do we, how do we allow people to promote what they're doing? So, if there's anybody that wants to come on or if you think there's somebody that could be supportive of, of what we're doing and helping getting message out, and it doesn't have to be directly rooted to school, just let me know and we'll try to get them on.
He's got the whole, like, all, like, the nicest microphones, like, in there, so you feel like you're in real, like, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, the IT department is huge to help me with that.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Can we maybe have that more prominently placed on the school's website? Like, maybe on the homepage?
Yeah, I'm sure we could, Jeremy. I'm not trying to promote, promote what we're, you know, I want to promote the, the students and the staff, but if, if so, yeah.
I mean, just the podcast is what I'm saying, like, it would be great if it were really easy to find that link so that people can, can listen to it, yeah.
And then one big celebration of a student, this is the second year enrolled that we had our fifth grade students participate in the New Hampshire Kid Governor Program. Last year, we had a student, one of the last, one of the top seven, make it to the top seven round, and was an executive counselor. He's just wrapping it up. We had another student this year, a fifth grade student that is now in that top seven. I believe that they're in the voting phase throughout, throughout New Hampshire for all that, so we'll find out what the results of that are soon. But really proud of, of all of our students, whether it's the one student that got moved on to the next round, but just hearing all the different platforms that students had and their ideas around that, that's a great program and I hope that, that will really continue and grow in the state.
It's the reason I became a state rep, I was part of that, we got there years ago.
It's great. It's fantastic.
Thank you. Any questions? How is, just on a different note, so how is, I guess it's barely to all three, but I should have brought it up before, but I didn't. How's the cell phone policy that, with the state law that Kelly, Governor A R put into place? How's that going?
I think it is, it's going well at Lancaster. Again, it's not our first year of doing it. It's, we've got a little bit more of a backbone because it is state law now this year. I would say that more students are following that than parents that obey the speed limit signs on school grounds. So, if we're measuring success rate one against the other, but we're not doing that, we have a couple of problems a day.
Okay.
We do find that if we really need to get ahold of parents, sometimes it's easier to have the student grab their cell phone out of their locker, come down to the office and call them than it is from the school, because we, sometimes if we don't click the right button, it's gonna give us a, a different number than 788-4924 when it shows up on their cell phone or if they see that their kid's calling. So, we're, we're working, we're working that a little bit, but for, in classrooms in the hallway, for 98% of our students, it's a non-issue every day.
I mean, I know you can only do so much. I mean, I'm not nitpicking at all. I mean, kids are kids.
Yep.
But I just wanna, you know, I want to make sure that we are following the state law, which is a requirement.
Yes.
How is, which I shouldn't even bring this up, how is the vaping or any of that sort of thing at that level? Has, is there any problems with that? Can you mention?
I think it is, it's not a school issue, I think it's a, I think it's a country, as a country. We're in a world of herpes vaping right now. I don't think it's gotten any better, even with the education that we've done. How 12 and 13-year-olds end up with a vape or multiple vapes, James, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I wish I had a better answer for you.
It's okay. No, I'm not putting you on the spot at all. I just, I know what the damage does, especially to the growing alveoli in the lungs and, and that sort of thing. So, I, I want everyone who hears, listening to my voice, that nobody should be vaping at all, never mind children.
Yeah.
So, maybe some parents out there that are listening can take heed and the warning that it's, causes all kinds of damages and I'm sure Kristen deals with that on a regular basis as well, so.
Yeah, the amount of education that we do around it.
Can only do so much.
And for a high percentage of students, it's working.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Time for Marion and I's joint report. Just to make note, tentatively at the next board meeting, you're gonna see an assessment presentation from Angie, but I would anticipate that maybe be in the first meeting in December when we look back historically, the embargo data doesn't happen until, you know, they, they don't lift the embargo till after that date, but tentatively set for next week. In here, this is a lot of information that would have come out two weeks ago at the October 23rd board meeting that had to be postponed, but some 712 transition updates. So, our administrative team met, started working on some staffing, you know, working at the central office level, looking at an administrative structure, kind of have a chart here to see the administrative structure that's going to exist. So, at both Lancaster and Whitefield, principals will continue to do their typical principal duties. And then the assistant principals are gonna pick up additional duties, including being a CIA liaison for their building, doing the I4C state coordination of data input, as well as the state reporting requirements. And to be able to do that, as, as we're developing the budget, we're looking at two FTE reduction at the central office. And then those positions will be named at a later time, but we are looking at a 2.0 FTE reduction as a result of the 712 and putting some of the duties towards the assistant principals. We've been finding with some of our data reporting and state reporting, there's sometimes a communication disconnect of what schools are trying to do and what interpretation at central offices of the data. And then we get these anomaly reports and it's hours upon hours trying to fix it. So, let's put the data back into the schools where they know it. We will have data days next year where, when we do our beginning of year, middle of year, end of year, where people come together and we talk and then the data's consistent district-wide. Because there are a ton of implications when it comes to our Title One funding, any of our federal grants, our adequacy aid. So, it, this data needs to be important where every penny counts. So, those types of structures make it happen. So, at the high school, we're looking for only one principal. We're looking for an AP of the middle school that will be primarily responsible for grades seven and eight. They'll also be the CIA liaison for seven and eight and as well as the I4C state reporter for seven, eight. AD, AP of the high school, so they'll continue to be the district-wide athletic director, be responsible for all discipline grades 11, 12, and the I4C and state reporting requirements for grades nine through 12. And then continue with the dean slash CTE director. They will be primarily responsible for discipline grades nine through 10, any CIA for the CTE programming, as well as picking up the K reporting requirements for Perkins compliance. So, any questions on the actual administrative structure that is gonna be proposed? All right. Continue on. One thing that's not in the report, but you have two action items tonight that I'm just gonna speak to real quick. So, one is, you have to formally adopt the name of a school. We are proposing the White Mountains Regional Middle High School. But with that, you need to know that the state is always gonna view this building, no matter what grades are in it, as two separate entities, right? One name, two separate entities. You always have to report out for every type of reporting from compliance to finance for grades nine through 12. And then seven and eight can be reported out in many different ways. You can report it out as a seven, eight junior high, you can report it out as a five, eight middle school, or you can report it out as a grade one through eight elementary school. And our recommendation is to report it out as a grades one through eight elementary, because then you can really leverage the people that already exist in our district, their K8 certifications, can continue to, they can continue to teach seventh and eighth graders, right? If we designate as a five, eight or a seven, eight, they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to spend a lot of money, go send these people back to school to do certifications that align with them. And it's crazy that the state does it that way, because it's the same person and it's just how we classify it, but we have to abide by the rules of certification. So, that's why our recommendation is for the grades one through eight classification. So, theoretically, you're gonna be running a high school and three elementaries, but up here, the elementary is gonna be considered grade seven, eight with no, you know, anticipation of any grades being added to it. Any questions on that? That was a long meeting with Nate Green at the Department of Ed.
I agree.
Weighing out the pros and cons.
Yeah.
And I feel for this lady here, because we now have to break down all costs in this building as elementary costs, high school costs, and if they're shared, what is the appropriate ratio? So, you have a, a map in front of you, if you weren't here at the community tonight, that the decision has been made to house them down in the north end, which is the far end of that building. And it's still, you know, we're, we're thinking seven classrooms, seven homerooms are, are going to be needed. We're kind of at the tail end of what we think the staffing needs are. We've had some preliminary conversations with the staff that are affected by the transition, but we want to have all final conversations before we put names out and, and who's gonna be up here and what spaces. So, hopefully in the next meeting or two, we can have that information for you. But at least you know that they're gonna be housed in the north end. With that, we are gonna look to do the bathroom renovation. You have some sample pricing there. Gary has been working hard. One company just flat out said, "Nope, the job's not big enough," so they're not providing a quote. And then a third company, Gary, was that walk-through?
It was on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, so we're just awaiting their number. We're hoping to have the quote, so at the next facilities meeting, it can be discussed there and then brought to the, the entire board. And then we've done some additional work around policy IKF. They're gonna report out on it later at, at programming last night, but also all other policies relative to bringing an elementary school on a high school property, as well as the implementation of the new Ed 306s. as well as the implementation of the new Ed 306s. And then some of the work we're having the NESDAQ folks do is a six-year study of high school course enrollments to look for patterns of courses that may be under-enrolled year after year. And then we got to look at, you know, the potential reasons why. You know, when you first look at some of Mr. Salmon's higher-end art courses, they look like the average enrollment is three kids at a time. But what we have to factor in is he's teaching those concurrently with two other courses. So yes, there's only three kids in that class. However, there's 20 kids in the room, if that makes sense, so.
That's been his practice for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah. Yep. So that is an update for the 712. Like I said, we've done some staffing and preliminary program of study work. We've got to finish having final conversations with people and final decisions on the staffing, and then that will be an update for you. Any questions on the 712?
I was just going to say the map is really hard to read here in this.
There's a cleaner copy, I can email you.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah. I think this is a copy of a copy of a copy.
Yeah, it looks like it's. Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that's going to allow for the separate entrance down towards the north end as well that you talked about at the community night right now.
Interestingly, we did take a small team and go visit a few other schools demographically that were similar. One of them that we were extremely interested in was Hawkeington. And, you know, they, they do things a little bit different. They have poor entrances and any kid can use any entrance. And there's a lot of mingling and whatnot. But I do think, you know, that to start this off, we've got to hold true to, you know, using the north end for the middle school and keeping them there. And then see how things go and have discussions with our stakeholders and families and see, you know, if they're, if we could do it differently. All right, and then the last thing in the report, or nope, we've got a policy amendment, DAF. Melissa could probably speak to that maybe a little bit. But it's basically increasing the thresholds to some of our purchasing requirements in correlation with the new federal requirements that were released.
Yeah, when I'm possible, we like to try to align with federal requirements. And it actually will bring our regular purchasing. So this is specific to the federal policy. DF is federal. We also have our regular local district purchasing policy. It's actually going to align better now, so helps us out.
And then you have a bunch of updates via Kitalor. And I could sit here and give you the highlights or trust that you guys can read them. So any questions?
Any questions for the assistant superintendent?
No?
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
And we go to the Director of Finance. Keith Wazner.
I don't have much. I'll mention a few things. Tax rates are not set yet. So I don't have, when we're looking at the apportionment formula, I do think it'll be really beneficial to see it in real time next to the rates. So I'm waiting for that and it'll be more helpful. Let me see, I have three audits going on. We're having a federal audit, another one that's more programmatic this time. So Marion has been really involved with Jen. We have a New Hampshire retirement audit, which is delightfully fun. And I have our regular audit going on, so it's busy. And the last thing is we are working on signing the final documents to roll out the Feed It Forward program for food service with Mel so that people can help donate. It's kind of like a roundup type thing, or you can kind of pick a, pick an amount and you can donate to the district to kind of help alleviate some of those, you know.
Deliqued?
Yes.
Will that be electronic?
It is going to be electronic.
Okay.
They waived the fee, so it was free. And with that, we also get the fee management program that they have. So what that is, it's going to allow us to start to build out the ability for parents and community to pay the district electronically. There is still going to be the regular credit card fee associated with it. However, I do think the ease of use is probably going to benefit a bunch of people. So we're going to slowly work that project, process out with the administrative assistants to kind of learn how we're going to use it. But we will have that ability, so I think that'll be nice.
Any questions?
Can you just, I keep asking, I'm sorry, but can you send me that thing?
Yeah, it's in my email and I'm writing it.
Okay, I just, because I'm going to have like a town get-together and discuss why we're losing that adequacy grant for Jefferson and that amount of money. And I don't want to go there and not, I'm just going to basically read your email to them and let them watch the video that I watched twice. And I have no idea what they're talking about. Like I don't even know who, like it's so complex.
Yes, it is.
Like, I mean, in the first phases, I was like, okay, that makes sense. And then they just went off on this tangent. And now I think I'm more confused now after watching the video than I was before.
I wonder, he, he did a good job. I thought.
He did.
But I wonder if Melissa might be able to kind of.
Do you think she'd come up for it?
The original document that I will reshare, it's actually been meaning, it's in the process of being attached to said email. But the document that Mark brought with him that day was, I think, very helpful.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
It was.
Thanks, just because people are going to want to know.
It simplified, not to give you more work, but it simplified it, yeah.
It really did. It was probably the most unjustified I've seen that laid out. It took me three years of watching those videos a couple of times a year to really feel like.
You get to grasp a bit.
It felt fluent, you know, in my brain. And when you're looking at a spreadsheet that's more than an alphabet's worth of columns to calculate adequacy. It's complex. It's very complex.
She was in math club.
I was a math lead. I'm sorry, math way, me too, yeah.
Just because, you know, I don't know how many people watch this and all, but Jefferson is losing a substantial amount of money, is that right? Is, do we know the exact value roughly?
Yeah.
Is it some?
But I don't have it up in front of me.
Okay, I mean, last time I knew it was about.
Two hundred thousand?
Two hundred something, yes.
So just the town of Jefferson is losing 200,000 in adequacy grant?
It's not, it's.
The district is losing.
A piece of the adequacy grant. The adequacy formula is quite extensive. So it's a piece of it.
It is a piece of it.
So I'm sure they're going to ask me why.
Well, you know, one of the things that makes it even more complex, James, is that we're a cooperative school district, so it's an all-pay-so-all-can-learn situation. That's part of the challenge we've seen with taking a whack at apportionment formulas and things like that without the state rectifying its school funding process.
Right.
And so it is impacted by the average daily membership and valuation property in Jefferson. But Jefferson itself is not the, is not losing the funds. The district is losing the funds because every, every town has a contribution. And it's horribly complex. The whole process is horribly complex. And it is no wonder people are confused and looking to oversimplify the school funding discussion because it's absolutely mind-bending to try to figure out what's going into those formulas and make sense of it in the context of what happens locally with our tax bills. It's, it's really, it is a disservice to taxpayers in the state for our school funding to be calculated the way it is.
So much for the Clermont decision and then the.
Which one?
The second, yeah, exactly. Now, the other one was down in, what, Peterborough or Conval.
Also Clermont, well, there's Clermont one and Clermont two and then Conval.
Then Conval, so.
Well, we'll see how the legislature addresses it in the coming year.
Got to do something. Thank you, Melissa.
Just a quick question, Melissa. Is there any, have you heard anything new on the school care, that whole issue? I heard there's going to be a lawsuit, but.
Steph and I traveled all the way to Manchester on Monday and were there all day, kind of in and out of the meeting where, I mean, I, I think they tried very hard to give you a big holistic picture, but I was still hoping for a little bit more information specifically on that topic.
They left us with, we should know in the next week or so whether our rates are going to go up.
Oh, that's the other question.
Eight, or anywhere between eight and 35% for next year.
Eight and 35% off.
Premium rates?
Premium increase.
Increase?
Increase.
Correct.
Eight and 35?
Yeah.
Pretty big range.
Pretty large range. It's likely going to depend on like where our claims fell for the year.
No, I don't, Tara, can you tell the audience who was listening? Because they may not have no idea what we're talking about. So I, this has to do with the healthcare?
Health insurance.
Health insurance.
Premiums.
Right, so I, some people have probably no idea what we're talking about. So we had to pay a substantial amount of money last.
So these rate, yeah, these rate increases are above and beyond the remediation of $614,000.
Right, the 614 is prior.
Prior.
That's what we just paid.
The rate discussion is related to our next school year's healthcare rates.
So we just had to pay over half a million dollars last board meeting. That's at least what I signed.
For a special assessment.
Right. So that, that's not, that's not going forward. That's because.
That's a great deal of shortfall.
They're making it a shortfall because they, because they're an insurance company, which, anyway. That's a lot of money we just paid out.
They failed to adequately manage their pool.
So $600,000 we just paid out. And unexpectedly, we had to have it done within.
Best.
A week?
Month.
A month.
December 30th.
Okay.
And then we're now looking at an increase in premium rates, presumably to refill the pool from which claims would be paid.
I would imagine, I would imagine that they would pick up the mistake that they made before, but.
So the other thing I think is worth mentioning is that we're, we're deep into budgeting for the coming year. And so to not have these rates fixed by now is a huge issue. And in particular, given the fact that school care is kind of the only game in town, unless all of the schools and municipalities that currently participate in that, that insurance program collectively move to somewhere else, so.
They originally said that they hoped to get our assessment, the information to us by the 10th. And then at their meeting, they said, well, you know, we just, we just can't promise that. So now it's pushed off. So the further we get pushed off, the further into budget season we are and, yeah.
So we can just safely assume as a board and fiduciary, that's what we're here for, is I'm going to think it's going to be 30%.
Their average is 17. I don't assume anything at this point, to be perfectly honest. And I don't think they're.
That's because you're the money person.
Their intent was not necessarily to refill. The assessment that we just got was to mainly refill.
But they want to avoid it happening again, so.
So they want to maintain.
I mean, that's not.
Okay, well, that makes it tough.
I think we're probably facing some difficult decisions moving forward.
Yeah. I thought I joined.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Next up is the Carroll vacancy candidate. If you would, please. So we did receive one response for our call for replacement of Mr. El Jelton, who just walked in the door right on time.
It's like he's been summoned or something.
And if you could introduce yourself, maybe give us a little bit of background about yourself. And then we'll see if anybody has any questions.
My name's Annette Markey. I live in the town of Carroll. I previously lived in Bethlehem. That's where two of my three children graduated. And then my youngest wanted to come to school here, so we sold our house and moved into the district. I am a graduate of Colbrook Academy. I was, I think, seven years on the school board in Bethlehem. And I think it was about a year and a half here I filled in. And I had to leave abruptly because of medical reasons. So hopefully, I enjoyed my time here on the board. It was wonderful. I was under Chairman Gregordell. It was a great group. Jim Brady, Herb Richardson, I have a brain cramp about the other names, Rebecca Markey, so.
Any questions?
It sounds like you know what you're getting into, so that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I care. I mean, the success of our republic is on our children that we're raising.
You understand it's to fill a seat until the term was up, which would be in March?
Absolutely.
Would you plan to run again in March?
I would not.
You would not?
The health reasons that I left for still are here, so I don't think I could do it long-term.
So is there any particular reason you feel you want to come back for just the three months?
I was approached by town members because I have knowledge. So there was that, rather than having someone else come in that does not have knowledge. And I care about the education of our children, so I certainly wanted to make sure I could fill in rather than have a vacant, and I care about my community.
Are you, oh, go ahead. Sorry, um, are you, so like, you know, we've always talked about Carroll paying more in taxes and that thing. And I know Ben was very concerned, which is, you know, obviously. How do you feel about that situation?
So I was on that committee in the beginning. I was not chosen to be on that committee as it continued. But let me just say that I understand very well the different aspects of it from living in Bethlehem. We had similar opinions about cooperative school districts. And I was privileged to be on the board when we did an intense study. We had an expert come in and school us on the different kinds and so on. And I think that's why they invited me or allowed me to be part of the original committee. So I see all the sides, I guess is what I would say. I will say that I was asked from community members and elected officials to make sure that I kept that on my table of discussion, so.
Do you think you'll be able to get anything done in the, you know, the March deadline? Like from now to March when?
Me personally?
Well, as, you know, as we all work together, like you think you can be able to accomplish anything?
So, I mean, I've written back on the minutes and it's, I'm still a little foggy on what has happened. I don't think it would be a bad thing to bring something before the voters. If nothing else, it puts the topic out there and in front of people. If they don't know about it, then to get educated about it. Me personally, I have the utmost respect of the gentleman that had schooled us all. I mean, one of the things that I came away with learning was that cooperative school districts, of all the types of regionalization there are, it's probably the worst. And I'm not saying that because of being from Carroll. Bethlehem was a larger community. It was probably comparable to how Lancaster is in this district. And there was disgruntled communities about different things at different times. They did end up changing the funding formula and profile while I was there. So I do understand, I understand the different points of view with it. And I do think that talking about it is good. And I think that we can maybe fix things. It won't always be everyone 100% happy. But I think we can, we could work cohesively and fix things.
I appreciate you stepping forward to help out because it's, you know, it's not easy all the time and having done it before and as somebody that's filled a vacancy as well. It's, people are knocking down the door, you know, and so it's really appreciated. I'm sure you're amazingly appreciative.
And it's a good time too, because now, as you know, we've talked about, you know, we're deep into budget season and things really accelerate, I think, from a board perspective from now until.
Until March.
Until March. So to have Carroll represented on the board and not have, you know, an empty, an empty chair or table is fantastic, so.
And particularly with someone who's been in the seat before and understands how boards operate.
And if you're, you know, if you're not planning to, you know, run in March, you also have time, I think, within the community to.
To be thoughtful about who to put forward.
Yeah, you know, and put out the word and, you know, try and find somebody to come back.
Just a little, I mean, I don't know a lot of everything. I've been very supportive of the boards and the Warren articles brought forward, so shame on me. I haven't. on me, I haven't really dug real deep historically, I just trusted the people that were elected to do the best they could for our kids, and the staff. I don't want to just say kids, because it's about our staff, right? And I want us to make sure our kids get well-educated. The healthcare, I'm just gonna throw this out there, maybe we could look at self-insuring the wellness portion and having an underwriter cover catastrophic, and that might save us money on the form, you know, on the payments, but that's just off the top of my head.
That'd be good perspective to bring to us. So, if there's no more questions...
So that sounds like you just signed up for the wellness, for the personnel committee as well, right?
More.
So, on the action agenda, it's item number eight, and you can stick around, we shouldn't be too much longer.
I can, if you'd like. I think I might be losing my voice, so I'm just probably gonna speak.
Okay, that's not a problem. I mean, I'm assuming it's probably gonna be affirmative vote, and you'll be contacted by staff who will make an appointment to...
Now, I think you gotta wait three days before swearing in. Is that the same with appointments?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, so, yeah, you'll make an appointment, have a swearing in, you'll get a phone book and an email address and all of those things, and you can go from there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for stepping forward.
I appreciate you coming to me.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And I'll just wait for a call or an email, and I can get your back and call.
That's all perfect.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, committee reports, Ed programming.
We had a great and grueling session last night, I think, how do we put that? It felt more like policy committee than Ed programming, because we're, we're working to make sure that our policies related to graduation requirements and incorporating seventh and eighth in, to the campus, so that we're all to align on Ed 306 rules, is where it needs to be. So it was, it was a long meeting, I think it was a very fruitful discussion. Many thanks to Patsy and Angie, who really dedicated a lot of time to fill that in, and to Rob for helping to provide those backup moments with the 306s. I have this sense that you've sort of become the district expert on where those sit.
I think Angie's got me beat in that category.
You think so? All right, well, at the end of the meeting, what we agreed on was that the policy had been slated for approval of the amendment tonight, and there really was still some more work to be done, including clearly identifying what other related policies would need to be rescinded, and so we opted to push that to the next meeting, so that we have the opportunity to share those revisions out with board members via email to really look at ahead of time. And as Scott alluded to in his report earlier, Angie did share with us that the data regarding state assessments is still embargoed, so that has also delayed the opportunity for her to come share that information with the board. She's, she's working hard to be ready as soon as the embargo is lifted, so that we don't have to hold that data for too, too long without the community and the board being aware of it. Did I, that's, that was this meeting, right?
Yeah, it was, it, it was long, but we, I think we worked through what we needed to with the graduation policy, so. It's tricky, because you're dealing with not only the, the Ed 306 rules, but also that sliding, the moving target of the different classes
Right.
and what applies to the different classes, what's in the old program of studies, what, what are things called, and it's, it's tricky.
One of the interesting things is, before the new Ed 306s, we were getting ready to celebrate going from three columns of requirements
Yeah.
down to two, and now with the Ed 306s, beginning with the class of 2026, or, you know, 2030, but the year 2026, there's all these new requirements, so we're gonna be in three-column land again.
Yeah.
Yeah. So apologies in advance to parents of incoming freshmen, when they get their first look at the program of studies and, and have to start navigating what applies to my kids versus other classes, it's, we, we would love to have a program of studies someday that just has, these are the requirements, hard stuff, but it is a moving target, it's a moving target, yeah.
Any questions for Ed programming? Moving on to facilities. Evelyn is in, other than...
We have a 22 meeting, we need to get to it.
The 20?
10, 22, I think they're in the future.
Let's take a quick look at the minutes. Yeah, it was a while ago. So we've really talked about a few different options. There's still continuation, conversation around the LES boiler plant. Originally, we had earmarked some money, however, that money is now, has been earmarked to cover the assessment from school care. So looking at numbers and whether we should bring, you know, one of three options, lease the boiler 100%, put it on hold for a year, or see if we want to do a one, or a Warren article surrounding the funding of the boiler plant at Lancaster. So we're gonna do some more discussions at the upcoming facilities meeting. Gary was working with Siemens to get what the forecasted price increases would be if we had to sign in March, depending the outcome of school meeting. We talked a little bit about the bathroom renovation, we kind of referenced, we were waiting on quotes, that is still true. We talked about some window blinds, and then how we need to go about budgeting for projects. Had a global discussion, you know, through the regular budget or whatnot, so...
Are you finding that the, the assessment and software that you put into play, I think it was last year for PM, is starting to bear fruit in terms of planning for those projects?
It really helped her on a very important report.
That's good.
No, it, it is, it is, and Gary can speak to it, he uses it daily, but it is really helping to allocate resources and tracking expenses associated, so that we have a better idea on the facility operational costs.
Excellent.
And it helps forecast replacements.
Rob, also, the, we also mentioned the, at LES, that, the curbing.
Yeah.
So we, we kind of come up with an idea a little bit about not replacing it, but maybe like patching it with some kind of concrete, remember, we talked, it was a couple weeks ago, we had the meeting.
Yeah.
So...
Gary, do you remember?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna pull that curbing out on the front block, and we'll rent an excavator, pull that curbing all out, I think we can just put some cold patch down, well, we'll get some pavement from a pavement company, put it down ourselves, compact it in there, so it's not a trip hazard. Because right now, it's so broke up, it's, it's a wicked trip hazard sometimes.
It is, definitely a trip hazard. All right.
It's beating our plows up, too, which doesn't help.
Yeah.
So do you want to have it, so the cold patch would be sort of like a, like a, like a no-step thing, or be...
Yeah, it's gonna be curved right down, compact, so it's curved right down, so it'll have a runoff, and you're gonna have to step up, right now, you have to step up over the curve.
Right.
You have to step it up onto the sidewalk.
Okay, all right, cool.
Okay. Next is personnel, which has nothing new to report. At this time, policy, just the one that we have on today. District wellness?
We are in between quarterly meetings for educators.
Unfinished business, any unfinished business? New business?
I would just like to publicly recognize that our school board member from the student body is not with us tonight, because it's not her typical night to attend, but Alexis Hicks did receive the Dodgers of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award, she's just named for that, and
I read that today.
That includes leadership and service, and I think that fits into the role that she plays for us here on the board, so just nice shout-out to Alexis for that achievement.
I read that today also. Okay, any other new business?
I got some fabulous new business. So, Rob, Mr. Smith invited me to the CTE area, District 3, is it?
Region 3.
Region 3?
Yep.
Is it semi-annual, annual?
We meet three times a year.
Okay, so I was delighted to be invited, and Patty mentioned that they butchered their own, well, they sent the hog out, had a professional butcher, and, A, it was the best bacon I've probably ever had in my entire life, like, literally, and they also made the pork sausage, breakfast sausage, and I know it's a sort of off-topic, but I'm giving them kudos. The kids, like, they had their uniforms on, the tables were, like, it felt like I was going to the Taj Mahal or something, I was, like, perfectly laid out, the, the food was, it was exquisite, it was perfect, I thought it was wonderfully put together by Chef and all his kids, and all the CTE kids. What, Rob, what do you, what did you take from that?
Oh, yeah, no, it was, so it was our first rendition of, of, you know, we always talked about this farm-to-table program, but there are components of farm-to-table that we don't actually do, so we don't want to miss-message what we're doing here. We like to use field-to-fork. So this was a hog that the kids raised, it was taken up with one of our partners to the EJ CJ Farm in Columbia, where the kids learned pig anatomy, how they learned how to break it down into six sections, and then were able to transport it back here, and Chef did a collaborative lesson between kids in culinary and kids in the diversified ag, and how to break those down into the usable meat groups, i.e. the sausage that we had and the bacon.
Did you make, did they make hen cheese?
No.
That I don't know.
They did not.
Remind me to ask you about the cheeks, what they do before, if they smoke them.
Which, yeah, we'll do that later, but, so they're starting to really see some of their hard work that they put in last year, starting to come full circle, and it's been interesting as they try to calculate a cost per pound, and how to, you know, be a business partner with, you know, Chef is their business partner, so what is an appropriate price that, you know, they're making money, and Chef's getting a deal, and able to use the food in the two, you know, in the program, and how they can expand it, so it's pretty cool.
The food was, was absolutely phenomenal.
They do a really good job with that bacon, they've got a state-of-the-art cold cooker and a kitchen.
It was thick, it wasn't like the crunchy nasty, it was thick, and had no, like, the nitrates and all that other bad stuff in it, it was so good, so I want to kudos to all the kids in this, the culinary as well as Chef, Matt, and Holland.
Okay.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Moving on to the action agenda, we're gonna go through items one through eight, then we will have a short non-public session, and come back to do auction agenda item nine, and after action agenda item nine, we will also have another non-public, but I don't want the first one to extend too long, so that we can get through the whole thing, so... Action agenda item number one, to approve the following school board policy for second read and approval, GBI, staff participation in political activities.
So moved.
Moved by Tara.
Second.
Second by Herb. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number two, to approve the following fundraising crowdfunding request with campaign funds anticipated to exceed $2,500, the Lancaster Elementary School, Grade Six Vertical Raise Fundraising Crowdfunding Campaign.
I'll move it.
By Chris.
Second.
Second by Herb.
What are they gonna spend it on, Scott? For the sixth grade, is that for their trip this year, or the vertical rise challenge?
I don't have an answer to it, I, I don't remember right now, to be honest.
Fair enough.
So, I will, if I do remember, I'll keep up.
Fair enough.
Any other questions? And is there a motion?
Yeah, we moved it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So motion was being seconded by Herb, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number three, to approve the identification of Grade Seven and Eight as a K through eight for school reporting purposes.
So moved.
Moved by Chris.
Second.
Second by Herb. Any questions? I think Rob pretty much explained it. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number four, to approve the change of the school building name at 127 Regional Road from the White Mountains Regional High School to the White Mountains Regional Middle High School, effective July 1st, 2026. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
James? There's a motion, second by Chris. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number five, to approve the following nominations, Nathan Chipman, White Mountain Regional High School, JROTC instructor, pending U.S. Army approval, at a salary of $50,845.33 annual JSIP-4, which is prorated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Herb, second by James. Question? Any questions?
That's the first of a list of nominations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I thought they were gonna be separate, but...
Oh, yeah.
Now, we have a list of high school and middle school winter athletic coaches and volunteers. Is there a motion to waive reading of the names?
I'll waive that, I'll move that.
Call second it.
Yeah, she made second it, all in favor to waive the names?
Aye.
That's unanimous, and so, a motion
There's one more list.
Back to the, approve the following nominations.
There's still one more list of nominations than that.
With the entire list. Still Herb for a motion?
Yeah.
And James second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Okay. Action agenda item number six, to accept the following retirements, Tina Mooney, Whitefield Elementary School, kindergarten teacher, effective June 30, 2026, and Francine Panett, White Mountain Regional High School, administrative assistant, effective June 30, 2026.
I'll move it with appreciation to both of them.
Moved with appreciation by Chris.
I'll, I'll second it.
Second by Tara. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number seven, to approve the following policies for amendment, DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And action agenda item eight, to approve filling this vacant Carroll School Board seat by Annette Markey. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Herb. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Welcome to Ms. Markey, and we'll let her now.
With appreciation, for sure.
With appreciation. And so, at this time, before we get to nine, I need, if I could, have a motion to move into a non-public session in accordance with RSA A:3, Section 2C.
So moved.
Moved by Tara.
Second.
Second by Herb. And a roll call, please, Steph.
Jay Ackerman.
Aye.
B. Flynn. T. Giles.
Yes.
Arlo Ocono.
Yes.
H. Randall.
Yes.
K. Van Bergen.
Yes.
So we'll go in the back room, we'll try not to be too long, we'll...
We may be going down to our room down there. The wall is not out there.
Okay, we apologize for the time it took, but it was a long discussion. So I need a motion to return to public session and seal the minutes of the non-public session.
All seconded.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Tara. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, so don't need a roll call. And we are now back in public session. Is the mic on, Jeremy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So we move on to action agenda item number nine, to accept the bid for district-wide transportation for the five-year contract beginning school year 2026 to 2027 to not view transport. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Chris, second. Seconded by Herb. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. So that concludes the action agenda. We will have another non-public session, but there will be no business after the non-public session. So if I could get a motion to go into non-public, to...